Next, community member Ali Saad from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about the coach.
Good evening. A young man, an immigrant, not a troublemaker, no known bad habits, a 3.7 grade average. He works 30, 40 hours per week to help self-support himself and to help support family members who are housing, feeding, and caring for him. Self-contributions towards his own well-being, all good attributes and zero faults, unless you consider oversleeping because of his excitement of graduating the following morning a fault. These are characteristics that we want all our students to exemplify. The city of Dearborn, the state of Michigan, America, Dearborn Public Schools, the Ford Motor Company, and our community have led the way to over 100 years of a thriving middle class and beyond for his students, including me. We are America's greatest continuous middle class on account of all of the aforementioned reasons. There's something for everyone and everyone for Dearborn. The kid deserved to walk and graduate. He did all of the right things. America could use another thousand Dearborn Michigans, they could use another thousand Dearborn public school systems which are the best in the country, even if we're short-changed and that we come in lacking, but boy do we thrive. Our citizens are proof of it. Okay? Another... And every city should rejoice in having thousands of kids like Haytham. God bless him and God bless us. We are special. Let's stay that way. Let's right the wrong. As for Juice, Mr. Baydoun, a man of the highest character who forsake material wealth for the love of children and their well-being and gave his all to make our children better citizens with a brighter future over nearly three decades, I for one can't fathom why we'd want to let go of a winner. Surely, we can come together for the sake of allowing Mr. Baydoun the opportunity to continue enriching our community and our children. His sacrifices should allow for that. I urge us to do all we can to retain Mr. Baydoun and see if we can hire another thousand Mr. and Mrs. Baydouns. We are blessed. Thank you. One last thing. I'm a product of the Dearborn school system.
You did a great job with the speech. Sure.
Next, community member Talal Turfi would like to come to speak to the board about Coach Baydoun.
Sorry to interrupt. I was told there's going to be three kids here. Is that true? Can you guys direct me or...? No? Sorry. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Turfi.
And I remind everyone to please refrain from the names of employees or citizens, anyone else.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Talal Turfi. Two weeks ago, I addressed the school board about Coach Ibrahim Baydoun. I said that coaching is not always about winning, rather is about growing as a team. Winning is not about numbers. Winning is about building strong character, and that is exactly what Coach Baydoun has achieved. He taught and modeled good citizenship and sportsmanship for both students as a counselor and for athletes as a coach. If he were not fired because of his lack to win more games, then why was he fired? Leadership is one of the most important traits for a coach to be successful. I touched upon Coach Baydoun's leadership, teamwork, and character skills that he instilled in his athletes in order to realize their potential, self-esteem, self-confidence, and emotional control. By bringing passion to the team, Coach Baydoun helped players understand that the coach is also on the same page. With great communication skills, Coach Baydoun was involved with his players, not only on the court but also off the court, because he was not only a teacher of the game but also of life. As a leader, Coach Baydoun gave it an all-out effort with hard work and discipline. As a leader, Coach Baydoun gave words of encouragement to his players in order to keep them positive. As a leader, when times were tough, Coach Baydoun would lead them through it. Before Coach Baydoun tried to lead and motivate his players, he evaluated his own playing level in order to model the values he wanted to pursue. As a coach, he improved his basketball leadership traits by evaluating his own character, commitment, communication style, self-discipline, and the ability to learn from mistakes. There is an old saying in Arabic, and I quote it just from the Quran. It's golden. You need to understand this. You cannot cover nor mix truth with falsehood, nor conceal the truth when you know what it is. As a young student of Yemen at high school that was not allowed to go to graduation, and with Coach Baydoun, they are the truth. Again, I repeat, as I did two weeks ago, restore Ibrahim Baydoun as a coach and applaud him for the job he had already accomplished in developing athletes to embrace the importance of balancing the athletic mind with the athletic body with the athletic mind. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, community member Hassan Baydoun would like to come to speak to the board about Coach. Hassan Baydoun?
Good evening. I'd like to begin by saying there isn't enough time in this meeting to credit Hajj Ibrahim Baydoun. Most know him as Coach or Counselor Baydoun for all of his accomplishments as a leader, coach, counselor, and mentor. Terminating Hajj Baydoun as a coach is nothing more than a witch hunt orchestrated by a few individuals that have administrative positions. In the last month's school board meeting, the community and educators alike rallied around retaining good quality educators, all in the wild while Superintendent Maleko spoke about recruiting new ones. I asked this panel, along with Superintendent Maleko, how is it possible to retain quality educators and recruit new ones when the message is no matter how much you give of yourself to this district, you can always be dismissed of your accomplishments without merit? I asked Superintendent Maleko to reinstate Hajj Baydoun's coaching position immediately. I'd like to remind this panel, along with Superintendent Maleko, that when it comes to voting on bonds, we as a community do not forget who has wronged us, nor do we forget who has done the right thing. If you expect our community to rally around you, you need to rally around us, the community, and do what's right. Reinstate Coach Baydoun.
Thank you.
Next, Donovan Farrell from Southfield would like to come to speak to the board about Coach. Donovan?
We can come back.
Next, community member... Next, Ahmed Rahal would like to come to speak to the board about Coach.
Good evening, board. My name is Ahmad Rahal. I graduated from this school in 2007. Most of the people you see back here are my classmates. The people that are a little bit older than me or younger than me, they're my neighbors because I grew up in the South End. In my time spent here at Edsel Ford, I learned something. I learned how to fight. Edsel Ford has always been, you know, sorry to say this, looked at the least out of the three high schools. We're not as big as Fortson, we're not as fancy as Dearborn, so we've always had to fight. So here, today, I'd like to stand up and fight. You know, this school district, the board points at the administration, the administration points at the board, somebody's always failing, but nobody is standing up to address these issues. In this last month, you guys have failed us several times. You've failed the students when it says "students" first right there by not letting them walk. You've failed educators by getting rid of some of the best ones and not replacing them with the people that need to be replaced. We want fairness, we want equity, we want transparency in the hiring process. We want to see who's making the calls. We want to see the people of the committee. We want to see how they're voting. We want to speak up. We want our voices to be heard. I came into this building today after being away for 16 years. I see all these flags. They don't represent the students here. The Arab community makes up about 60% of the students here. How many Yemeni flags do you see up there? How many Lebanese flags do you see up there? How many Palestinian flags do you see up there? If you want us to assimilate, just keep the American flag up there. If you want us to be who we are, represent us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, attorney Fatina Abdraaba would like to come to speak to the board about a coaching position.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Fatina Abdraaba. I'm a graduate of Dearborn High School, 1999. I grew up in West Dearborn in the 90s, where the number of Arab families like myself could be counted on one hand. I lived and experienced firsthand the bias, discrimination, and yes, I'm going to say racism, of Dearborn Public Schools. But it worked itself out, at least for me. It directly impacted my personal and professional choices, including having graduated from Harvard, spent 20 years as a community activist and social justice organizer, and I had the courage to give the commencement address at Dearborn High School in 1999, over 20 years ago, calling out the racism and the issues that we talked about in this very gathering tonight. I'm going to cut to the chase. I'm going to get cut to the chase. We only have a couple of minutes. We're calling for an immediate investigation and review into the varsity coach selection at Edsel Ford. Unlike the situation with the graduate, I don't want anybody up here to say, "Well, it's too late, we'll look into it." You can put a motion up before everybody tonight and at least ask for a review or an investigation. The facts don't lie. We know what happened. A committee that was a sham committee was created, does not reflect the community. It was ad hoc, and we know what that looks like. To call it even a committee or to call it transparent, I'm going to call it a debacle, a dog and pony show. So while it's been 20 years since I gave that speech on courage and on discrimination and on racism, and Adil is right, changes do take time. Today, we're going to ask the trustees, Mr. Maleko, to at the very least, there is no harm in calling for an investigation, for a reset. It is clear, I don't know this principle, it is clear, I can't speak to her intention, I can speak to her decision-making, and just based on the agenda items from tonight about her, she's 0 for 3. And my brother is right next to me. My brother who's right next to me was the athlete, but I know athletic language. She's got a bunch of L's in her column. I ask that the process gets restarted, that the trustees or a number of you have the courage to present it today, that it gets voted on, pushed through. There's no harm, no foul. It's the offseason for...
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next, a community member Mohammed Al-Jami from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about Coach.
Good evening. Good evening. I stand before you guys as a byproduct of the Dearborn Public Schools and now as a concerned taxpayer. The situation we have at hand is not just about Coach Kamal, however, it's about the concern when it comes to the hiring process used in the schooling system. The issue at hand, as a Yemeni-American, I feel as if our people are being direly marginalized, even though we currently make up 65% of the student body. A big part of the job qualification as a teacher, coach, or someone chosen to represent a community is job skills and a cultural fit. Not only is it sad to see people who are overly qualified being turned down for positions they deserve, but seeing it happen again and again and again to the same group of people. The signs of unfair HR practices, biased selection, and nepotism is blatant. If that is not the case, then why is there a member of the administration panel telling the community that the principal wanted Mr. Redzik in advance? And as a community, why did we hear that... Why do we hear that Mr. Redzik was going to get the position with the Yemeni assistant? Not only does this show an unfair selection, but that was premeditated as well. How does a group that makes up 65% of the student body have an underwhelming representation in the panel process used? One would assume that if a panel is chosen to represent a community, that it would be from the community. Token responses and token positions won't be enough to pacify the community anymore just for it to happen again. There is too much politics going on, and people aren't operating on what's best for the kids of this community, but they're operating on what furthers their agenda the most. We stand before you as a united front, and we demand accountability at the highest level. We want an investigation done on the hiring process used in Edsel Schooling System.
Next, community member Omar Abdraaba would like to come to speak to the board about Coach.
Can you repeat that name?
Omar Abdraaba.
Hello. My name is Omar Abdraaba, the brother of Fatina. Got big shoes to fill. She's a Harvard grad, and I'm not. But at any rate, I've been a citizen of this city for 39 years. I'll keep it short and sweet so everybody can have a chance to speak. But we know... Let me just say something about myself. I coached at Dearborn High School many years ago. I played several sports there. I played two sports in college, and I think I understand as well as anybody the impact a coach can have on a player. And I don't know all the facts about Coach Baydoun, and I'm not sure why he was let go, and I think he's a great fit for this program. But since he's not here and he's no longer the coach, it's very obvious who the next coach should be. I could make the argument that Phil Jackson and Tom Ezzou are great coaches, but I would also argue that Kamal is a better fit for this specific role. He embodies all of the Dearborn values. He inspires, he educates, he celebrates, but I think the biggest thing for me is he's a big part of the feeder program, the youth program he's been leading for 15 years that is a big portion of the student-athlete population here. So I encourage you all to do the right thing, to look into this matter, and as a parent, I'm learning that we have to assume positive intent, and I'm going to do my best to do that, but I'm going to teach my kids to speak up and speak out and do the right thing, and you all should do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Next, we have student... Next, we have student Mohammed Sohaba who would like to come to speak to the board about the hiring process. Mohammed Sohaba from Dearborn.
Go on to the next one.
Next, Zad Al-Jami would like to come to speak to the board about hiring from Dearborn, community member.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name is Dr. Zad Al-Jami, part of the community and a physician here in the community. So I'm going to keep this brief. I'm here basically to speak in regards to Mr. Kamal Al-Jami not being promoted to varsity basketball coach at Edsel Ford High School and also the firing of Coach Baydoun, who I've heard numerous excellent things about from the community. You know, I'm not aware of the process, and I hope to understand it better from all of you. You know, and you don't have to answer these questions right away. If you want to summarize it at the end of the session, that's fine. So, you know, what is the process of electing coaches, and not just, you know, basketball, but any sport? You know, is this process transparent to other candidates and to everybody in the athletic community? Do you think this is a fair system? I'd like to remind everybody also that many of us, you know, left countries and places where we were, you know, treated unfairly and in corrupt conditions and came to the U.S. to Dearborn for the better. Coming to the United States from a more fair opportunity to be successful, as well as demonstrate to the younger generation that hard work pays off, that if you work hard enough, your time will come. You know, I think this is what defines Coach Kamal and Coach Baydoun. I have confidence in our leadership and in our city officials, the leadership in the city that educated me and brought me to where I am today. In summary, I feel Coach Kamal Al-Jami and Coach Baydoun's many years of coaching experience have gone unnoticed, and I'm hoping that there's a more transparent process that's open to the athletic community, to why a particular individual is chosen. Either restore Coach Baydoun or promote Coach Kamal and give him the fair chance that he deserves to be a varsity basketball coach at Edsel Ford High School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, parent Nabil Abdullah from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about the hiring process.
I'm sorry. Are you saying that your name was called one or two cards again?
Oh, can you repeat your name? Okay, yes, I have your card. Thank you.
Good evening. I see there, student is first. Is that right? Student is first. Our student first. Is that right? I don't see that. I think it's stay silent. If you follow what you write, what you read when you graduation, you have to follow right. Your student come late for a couple minutes, after 12 years, oh, you're not graduation no more. No. You broke his heart, you broke his family heart, you not let him to speak with you. Never. Please, follow what you write. Maybe you write for commercial, yes, oh, everyone see it. Yes, you now working it. Our kids, they are scared right now. Baba, maybe if I come late for one day, for a couple minutes, they told me, "Grady here, you're not graduation right now." Think about the kids. They're from Yemen, from Lebanon, from Afghanistan, from somewhere, sulfur world. Their family is not here. Some student, they are work hard, and they go to the school. Sometimes they feel tired, I will sleep late, go wake up, go to the school, oh, "Grady here." You're not with them. See you next year. Think about a student, not about a teacher. Message to the principal, teacher is your kids. Doesn't matter how old are you. You have to be listen to them before you talk. For the board, we need you now here to hear us every month on time. We need you to go to the school, hear from the teachers, from the student, see before the mistake came, and we go outside. Hey, guys, 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 you not do nothing, we know that. We speak with you a lot of time. If you love the student and the student is first, I will see you go walk down the student. Congratulations. You didn't do that. You didn't do that because you don't have the power. Some guys on their table, donation, or some guys, they told you, "Stay here." Maybe politics, by the way. Maybe racist. Please, student is first, not last. Thank you.
Next, parent Nabil Abdullah from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board.
Good evening. Hello?
Yeah, it's on.
Thank you for having me here, and just real quick, I want to say thank you to trustee Barry and trustee Adil for your kind words for the community. And, you know, about the hiring process that we have here at Edsel, it does not reflect the people of this community. I graduated from Edsel. I played basketball for Hajj Baydoun, one of the best people you could be around, impeccable reputation. Kamal's another great guy, yet both of them are out. Doesn't make sense to us. And another thing, I just want to remind my community and everybody up there, we will remember all of this when it's time for a bond vote and when it's time for counting day. This is not going to end. We will come for you guys. And to the current principal, we will be joining all the PTAs, and we have woken up and we're here, and this is not the last you're going to hear from us. Thank you.
Next, parent Dr. Adip Mosad from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about marginalization of Yemeni-American students and staff at DPS.
Good evening. The Yemeni community and a lot of minoritized communities within Dearborn Public Schools have been marginalized for years inside these schools. While our community has been the main source of enrollment growth, which is translated to financial sustainability and strength for these districts, our community and students and staff continue to face unfair treatment by the administration of this district. Why does it, why does every issue has to be fought all the way through to the board? Why every position need to be lobbied, need to be brought in, and need to be investigated that involve Yemeni-Americans? Why Yemeni-Americans qualifications don't stand alone by themselves in front of this administration? Why these staff members, when they go out, they become stars and leader of their districts? Ask yourself why. The double standards that was created by this school has created two school systems, unequal and divided, and need to be stopped. Something is wrong in this district. We've been asking you for many months and years to fix it, and we have not get anything in return. Many examples, secretary position at Etzel Ford fought for two years to get a secretary that can translate to parents in front of the school. Parent liaisons, I sat in a room where the district was already decided who will go where the night before, and that was in writing and to you. Leadership positions, from assistant principals through executive directors, have to be fought over and over again. Students' experience, and main from, in football, or soccer, or graduations, Yemeni-American staff continue to struggle in face of mistreatments and discriminations. Someone like Kamal, who has devoted 13 years in this school, would not give a chance to be a head coach. Why? Why he would not get a chance to? Ask yourself why. Why he would not get a chance to be a head coach in this school while he devoted 13 years? And when an executive director position last year came in, and someone from the outside community was Channel 7, year of educator, did not get a good review because we value district experience. Now, when it's a time to value that district's experience, you tarch it out. I think it's time for you to come out of your hell horse and meet the community demands, or else you are forcing us to extreme demands and extreme steps. And one, we'll vote every bound down, if, we'll vote every bound down. Two, we will, two, we also will hold our kids at home. We will boycott all the after-school programs. We will have follow the footsteps of the civil rights movement in this country until we get fair representation, until we get a board that would be included.
Thank you very much.
Next, parent and community member Naz Kaid would like to come to speak to the board about students not being able to walk in ceremony, and Coach Kamal from Dearborn.
I stand before you today as an advocate for one of our own. One of our own who has dedicated his entire career to the success of this district, to the prosperity of our students, and to the betterment of the community. This person is Kamal Al-Jami. Kamal Al-Jami has been a pillar of this community for years. He's mentored countless students, guided them towards success both on and off the field. He's worked tirelessly to ensure that the program runs smoothly, that the students are well-supported, and that, and that the team is a successful representation of our district. Yet despite his unwavering dedication, Kamal's been passed off for the varsity head coach position. Kamal has shown nothing but love and devotion to this program, and by overlooking him for the coaching position, you're doing him a great disservice. But this is just, this is not just about Kamal. This is about doing what is right for our students and our community. Kamal's an outstanding role model for our students. He embodies the kind of leadership, dedication, and hard work that we wanna instill in our children. By refusing to give him the recognition and opportunities that he deserves, we're failing our students. The hiring process is made up of a panel which is comprised of parents, students, and administrators. The parents' panel only has one parent out of the five parents from our community. The student panel only has two students of the seven students from our community. And the administrators' panel only has one administrator out of the five administrators from our community. One of those members of this panel is the school principal. As a member of the administrative panel, this school principal holds a lot, holds a significant amount of power and influence over important decisions such as who will be chosen as varsity coach, or who participates in a graduation ceremony. I urge those in leadership positions to fulfill the responsibilities as leaders and mentors to act with fairness, impartiality, and empathy. It is important to note that the lack of representation from our community can contribute to bias and inequity in the selection process. We must prioritize fairness and equity in all aspects of the hiring process and ensure that diverse perspectives and voices are represented. This is the same principle that denied Hatem Jalan, an outstanding student, the honor of participating in the graduation ceremony when he missed rehearsal due to work exhaustion from the night before. Hatem has shown incredible resilience and dedication to his education despite working over 30 hours a week to support himself and his family, and he's maintained a 3.7 grade point average. It's clear that the school principal has displayed a lack of empathy and leadership qualities in her handling of this situation. As the principal, it is her responsibility to act as a leader and mentor to the students, especially during important moments like graduation.
Thank you for your comments. Next card, please.
Next, community member Najee Al-Madhedi would like to come to speak to the board about hiring process.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Maleko and Board of Trustees, my name is Najee. I've been a resident for 40 years. When I graduated out of college, one of my first jobs was actually working with General Motors, where we designed a brand-new vehicle. And my first trip to the chief engineer's office, I remember that day very clearly, he had a large desk, in the front of his desk he had a plaque, and the plaque read, "In God We Trust, All Others Bring Data." So I wanna bring some data to you tonight, Insha Allah. So, it took me about an hour on a Saturday evening, but I did a little bit of research to try to understand how many Yemeni-Americans are actually in our Dearborn Public Schools. Now, I don't know what the actual number is, but I came up with 35%, okay? Some people are saying it's much higher than that. So what I then did next is, I asked myself, okay, we're talking about processes, and we're talking about this and that and the process. I said, okay, in our public schools, in our high schools, we have, how many coaching, varsity coaches? How many of them are Yemeni-American? The answer is zero. Then we talk about principals in our high schools. How many Yemeni-American principals do we have? The answer is zero. So take a look at this graph. 3.7% of all of the leadership positions in the city, based on principals and varsity head coaches, is Yemeni-American. And we're almost 35, 40% of the population. Now, one of the reasons why I love America is because, of course, of our Bill of Rights and our Constitution, but it's the basic value of fairness. And I wanna ask Dr. Maleko specifically, do you think, sir, this is a fair representation of the district and Yemeni-Americans in our district? I wanna ask the audience, please, does anybody think this is a fair representation of Yemeni-Americans in the city of Dearborn, public schools? Does anyone think this is fair? Raise your hand if you think it's fair. Do any of you think that this is fair? This is my question to you guys. So what I'm asking you is something very simple. I want a motion tonight, tonight, to investigate this head coaching job at Etzel Ford, and exactly what the heck happened. That's number one. And then number two, we want, by the way, a full and an honest review of what happened. And then number two, I want an answer, why do we have a graph like this? Aren't you the leadership that we need to hold accountable? So we need to understand why this is going on, and we need answers.
board.
First of all, I wanna thank Adil Mazeb and Hussein Barry and Dr. Maleko for being available to the community when we need them. I reached Mr. Thorpe, and I did not even get a reply. And shame on you for, for not being responsive to us. But I'm here to speak on behalf of Kamal Al-Jami, and to use the basketball analogy, with regard to the coaching position, we gave you an easy layup, and you missed it. Kamal was an easy layup for you, and he should've got the job. So to speak of his experience, he has 13 years. In comparison to other coaches, it's 13 years in the building. Let me stress that, in the building. We cannot marginalize that. Somebody that was able to stick and be loyal to the school, and stay at the school, and serve for 13 years. Kamal does a lot of things outside the community. Recently, somebody made the comment that the other coach that was hired is liked by the Yemeni community. We expect all teachers to like the Yemeni community. That should not be a criteria for hiring a coach. We want somebody that understands the Yemeni community, and Kamal does that. 60% of the population is Yemeni, and somebody talked earlier about the number of the panel. If you look at the panel, the first panel, only one Yemeni. You had a parents in there, that's not a parents, it's a parents' committee, you had somebody that's not a parent. On the kids' committee, too, are from our community. There are students in that committee who are Mr. Rizik, I didn't wanna mention his name, students. On the administrative committee, only one from our community. The, the deck was stacked against Mr. Al-Jami to get the job. So let's, I asked for a motion. I asked for a motion from the trustees, from Dr. Maleko, to investigate. I, I asked for the motion. We pleaded with the, with the board, and we don't get, we get a lot of boilerplate responses from the board. You could see the way the board is, it's divided. You have two Arab-American, and you have the rest. We wanna be able to communicate with you. It's, it's not fair that you don't respond to us, and you don't listen to us. We have no access to you. We have access to these people, but we don't have access to you. We asked you to put a motion in place, and to investigate. We really want you to reverse the decision, not just investigate, we want you to reverse the decision. You have an Arab-American that was let go, and you have an Arab-American that was rejected. That's...